The Columbus City Council meeting for October 6, 2025 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, a copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Assistant Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Alarcon.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Polanski.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. Mayor conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all of our citizens. Amen.
Oh, say can you stand the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, see does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the foam of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time in our meeting this evening anyone in our audience would like to come forward and address any item on our agenda, we'd invite you to please come up to the podium. We'd ask that you give your name, your address, and we'd ask that any comments be limited to five minutes or less. All right, we'll move forward with the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the September 15, 2025 city council meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the September 22, 2025 Civil Service Commission meeting certifying police captain candidates Heath Aldrich and Jamie Lavander. Item 4C, ratify all actions of James B. Bulkeley. LARM representative identified in the minutes of the annual members' meeting of the League Association of Risk Management on September 24, 2025, including election of nominees to the LARM Board of Directors. Item 4D, application from Walmart Incorporated for Jordan L. Blocker as the manager in conjunction with their liquor license. Item 4E, resolution number R25-126 authorizing payment of various improvement projects. And item 4F, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Leads us up to new business.
Item 13A, quote from Midwest Turf and Irrigation in the amount of $144,909.16 for a 16-foot mower for the airport. This is CIP number 26-13.
Mr. Mayor, move the quote from Midwest Turf and Irrigation for the 16-foot mower be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Midwest Turf and Irrigation. Any discussion?
These items are considered the new budget, right?
Correct.
So would we want to put on every one of these ones coming up?
Pending approval.
Pending approval of the budget.
I don't believe that's necessary.
It's not? Okay.
Understand your thought and your reasoning, but we've got the legal man that says we didn't need to. All right, all right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, quote from Midwest Turf and Irrigation in the amount of $114,873.22 for a five-deck rough mower for Quail Run Golf Course. This is CIP number 26-08.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Midwest Turf and Irrigation for the five-deck rough mower be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Midwest Turf Irrigation for the five-deck rough mower. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13C, purchase from Stryker in the amount of $78,433.61 for a trade-in credit after, excuse me, after a trade-in credit for five Lucas CPR devices for the fire department. This is CIP number 22-12.
Mr. Mayor, I move the purchase from Stryker for five Lucas CPR devices be approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the Stryker for the five Lucas CPR devices for the fire department. Any discussion? I noticed this says CIP number 22. Is this a year 22 budget item, or did it set a typo?
Things that carry for multiple, for multiple years are numbered when they're first come in the budget and their project number stays as their CIP number.
Gotcha. All right. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13D, purchase from McQueen Emergency Group in the amount of $940,000 for fire engine and $2,150,000 for ladder truck for the fire department, with funds to be dispersed over two fiscal years. This is CIP numbers 26-18 and 26-20.
Mr. Mayor, move for the purchase of, from McQueen Emergency Group for fire engine and ladder truck be approved?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase from McQueen Emergency Group for the fire truck and the ladder truck. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Heather, this is probably a question for you, but when I looked at the bid, if we, if we look at the bid, the, we could save 100, over $100,000 if we pay for it in one shot. Is there any way, any rat hole you've got that we can raid?
Watch how you answer that.
No. No. We went over this.
I was afraid you were going to say.
Multiple times, and there was no way to get them both in the same year.
Charlie, if you want your name on the truck, maybe you'd come up with that money and we'd do that.
I could come up with half a percent. Oh, very good. Thank you, Heather.
Any questions for Fire Chief Gray?
I would also like to point out that our sales rep, Todd Klein, is here also. If you have any questions for our sales rep.
It might be worth just explaining to the, this is, these are very large purchases. I think it's impress, it's important that maybe you explain the process that you went through, how much work you've put into making these decisions.
Sure. So the beginning of this year, back sometime in the March timeframe, we met with four different manufacturers of apparatus, just to kind of get the ball rolling. We are in desperate need of a ladder truck. Our 2009 has had significant issues long before I've been here, and it's, it's to the point it's unreliable. We have dropped it to liability only. It is sitting in the apparatus bay. We will not take it out, and we, we have to have a ladder truck. So that is, that is the big one, the $2.1 million to replace the ladder truck. Secondly, when we staffed Charlie Lewis, I believe Mr. Hemer, you, you had brought this up about needing apparatus in the future, and our intent then was to utilize the rural engine that was going to be stationed at that station. It is still stationed at that station. However, we have learned, due to the size of that truck, it does not need to be running through the city day in and day out. We are wearing down those tires quickly when we're using it as a reserve apparatus. The truck was designed, and it, and it works well for the rural district, wide open spaces, carries lots of water, extremely heavy, no complaints with it. There is a place for it in our service. But day to day, for what our crews do within city limits, it does not work. So that engine will replace the 2002 engine. One of the great things about this deal is we're trading in with McQueen our ladder truck, and they are taking that ladder truck, and then they are going to refurbish our engine too, which is currently the engine at Charlie Lewis Station. So we're expecting to extend the life of that rig for 10 to 15 years. That will provide another pump that'll be housed at Station 1 when we get to that point. But really, when you look at this, we're getting three new apparatus, right, for, for the price of two. As we went through the build process, McQueen Pierce Manufacturing came back with a 13-month build time, which in today's world of fire apparatus is extremely rare. There are some things that we weren't able to do as far as customization, but we were able to build trucks that meet our need regardless of those few restrictions, and we get them, you know, 13 to 15 months. The 13-month time is the time we order, correct me if I'm wrong, Todd, the time we order to the time we go up for final inspection. There's some time in there to get it shipped back down, pre, post-delivery inspection, things like that. So we're expecting 15 months around there to have that in service. So we're excited for it. There is definitely a need for it. It is a very big purchase. One thing to recognize also is they are not getting cheaper. The longer we wait, the, the more we're going to end up having to spend. So that's, that's how we went through this process. It's been a very long process. We ended up going to Wisconsin with McQueen toward the Pierce factory. We had a lot of discussions. We spent a lot of time on the specifications of these apparatus, and we are very comfortable that these will last us 20, 25, 30 years maybe.
A question I got asked last night about what kind of miles do we have on these trucks? But I think it's, isn't it more engine hours that you look at, not miles?
We do. We look at, we look at engine hours. And for the ladder truck, you would be surprised to know that very low, very low miles in engine hours. The problem is not the, so much the engine, although we did just have a rebuild last year on that engine. The problem is hydraulics and the computer systems in that, in that truck. They just simply do not work. You know, no one's fault. We've spent a lot of money on trying to get that truck to where it was serviceable to no avail. The engine is running fine, but it's starting to show its age. The valves and the pump need to be refilled. The transmission needs to gone through, be gone through. The engine needs to be gone through. Bodywork, the interior brought up to speed. So we mostly go on engine hours. Captain Salick is responsible for apparatus maintenance within our department. He has a schedule built out through our online records management system that we use for any preventative maintenance, and he, that's how we track all of, all of those things. So they are all set on schedule for preventative maintenance. They are all getting the things that should be done, done. We spend a lot of time, him specifically spends a great amount of time tracking all of those things and getting them to where they need to be, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? All right, seeing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no further conversation, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, quotes from Ace Hardware EDM Feld Equipment Company Incorporated, Stryker, Whitecap, McQueen, Bombguards, and Hind Brother, or Hindfire Equipment in the total amount of $188,495.09 for fire apparatus equipment. This is CIP number 26-24.
Okay, I'm waiting for somebody to repeat all that.
Mr. Mayor, move the quotes from Ace Hardware, Ed M. Feld Equipment, Inc., Stryker, Whitecap, McQueen, Bombguards, and Heineman Equipment for fire apparatus equipment be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to do all that. Any discussion? And I am assuming these are a piece, this is equipment and accessories for our new purchases that will be part of, okay. So it's all, it's all kind of a package deal. All right. All right, seeing no further questions, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13F, quote from MPH Industries in the amount of $27,736.12 for nine radar systems and two traffic stat sims, systems for the police department. This is CIP 26-16.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from MPH Industries for radar and traffic stat systems be accepted?
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote for MPH Industries. Any further discussion?
What's a traffic scat system? In case I, I'm driving around, I want to make sure I'm.
Avoiding it.
Brett Stryker, interim chief. Traffic stack system, we've been having some complaints about speeders in certain areas within the city, some of Wagner's Lake, and many other areas. It's difficult for us to enforce that because dates and ti, or times of day, days of the week, we don't know when this is going on. So, and we just can't have a car sitting there 24/7. We just, we don't have the resources for that. So what this will do, well, it will kind of, you know, if, if someone goes by a high rate, it's kind of like the speed trailer, but it'll record date and time that it took place so that we can get an idea of when it's happening and then bring some selective enforcements to those locations when, when that high rate of speed is being recognized.
So this would be a way to try to see if there's a pattern to speeding more or less, and, and if we find a pattern, you deploy resources to address it?
Correct.
It will not identify a vehicle?
Um, I, it, it's, it won't, it's not got like license plate reader or anything like that. It's just going to, it's going to be like a speed trailer, but it'll give us more data.
All right, thank you. It is a portable unit or a?
Yes.
A trailer-mounted unit?
Pole.
It's actually a pole. It's mounted on a pole. So it looks like it's part of maybe electrical system or something. Nobody's going to see it.
It's inconspicuous, right?
Although we've had cameras shot, so.
It doesn't have a readout.
Hopefully nobody will figure it out.
All right. Oh, very good. I think that's a great idea. Any further questions? Hope not he left. All right. All right. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13G, reallocate $16,100 from CIP 26-19 and purchase from Schiffer Signs Incorporated in the amount of $11,100 for fleet graphics and edemia and the amount of $5,000 for mobile fingerprint systems for the police department.
Mr. Mayor, move that the reallocation of $16,100 from CIP 2619 and purchase from Schiffer Signs Incorporated for fleet graphics and edium for mobile fingerprint systems be approved? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussions?
Yes, sir.
Chief, any, any thought given to not stripping the cars and just when the new ones come in, put the decals on, and you'd run two sets of colors for a few years?
We considered that.
Save yourself $2,000.
We considered that. It's, it just was a, a situation where we were going to have different, because we have a lot of cars. We're going to have different cars for, you know, we would have three that would be with a new stripe, and then next year, three with another, and, and eventually we would fill it. But we thought we, you know, this, this is a change that's probably been needed for quite some time. Our striping right now is outdated, and, and really where it came from was, it was the Ford striping that they used for their examples. So this, this is going to look a lot nicer. It's going to be way more visible, and we just decided, you know, let's just, if we can, let's just do all the cars and, and do it that way. That money was actually reallocated from purchase of rifles. And the rifles were not, our, our guys want to, you know, they want to alter the rifle for their own, you know, red dots or whatever. And so it just wasn't, you know, it wasn't something that was a priority for our department, so we kind of went to this, and, and I think it'll give us way more visibility in the public.
Kind of make them all look like the sheriff's department.
No.
That's what they look like in the picture.
According to the picture, you think?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, Captain Wolczek came up with this. I think it's, it's, it's a sharp design, and I think it'll look good against the white.
Okay, appreciate that though.
Yeah, I agree with, let's, let's get this thing done and get it visible, uh, throughout the community all at once and, or as close to all at once as we reasonably can and get it done.
It also, there's no question at that point, once they're all done, though, that's a Columbus police car as opposed to, where's that one from? Oh, wait, that's, you know, so we, we just want to make sure that we're uniform. Um, we've kind of strayed away from that in some areas and, uh, uniformity needs to come back a little bit so that we all look the same.
Well, for what he's charging for stripping them, it's a very good, reasonable price. If you've ever tried to do any of that, it's, I wouldn't do it for that kind of money.
Yeah, I, I.
So.
I'm not aware of that yet.
All right. Any other, any other questions for Chief? All right, we have none. We have a motion and a second to approve the sixteen thousand, one hundred dollars for Schiefer Sign and the five thousand dollars for mobile fingerprint systems with no further discussion. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen H consideration of support for proposed merger of Union Pacific and Northern, or Norfolk Southern, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, I move to support the merger of U- Union Pacific and Norfolk Southern.
We have a motion and a second to support the proposed merger of Union Pacific and Norfolk Southern. Any discussion?
Just curious why?
This was brought to us and, and we requested or asked by UP if we would support their merger, being that we are an original town on the UP main line and the relationship with UP. They have reached out to multiple communities along their main line for the same thing. Uh, I have, I have support letters that have come from Senator Moser, Senator Fisher, um, every, all the other areas that are trying to support this and, and show, you know, good batter in between.
They have to go to a review board and I think they're trying to build a case.
I guess I'm kind of like print on this one. Why wouldn't they show up and ask us?
Well, I, I, okay, I, good point, I can tell you that because I got a letter on Saturday, Sunday night telling Tara and I from UP that they were happy to see that we put this on the agenda. He apologized that he was on his way home from a wedding or he would be here. And his name is David Black.
Yep.
I noticed in the letter, it said that they, would help them with speeding up the, their switching and stuff like that. Sure, I sure hope that happens, you know?
We, we, we try that about every two years and see what it gets us, you know?
They said that?
Yeah, and the letter talks about efficiency and being quicker with things, so.
Last week, the engine stopped within feats of the intersection and people were crossing with the arms down. I mean, a feat of the intersection. I, I, I just don't understand how they don't understand that's a problem. Putting those people in harm's way, they don't care. I, I don't know, I, I can't support them, I don't know. They, they, they have just done nothing for us. You know, they've asked us for money for, to even study the Viadoc issue. I mean, they wanted money upfront. I mean, come on, I mean, you gotta be a little user friendly here. I just, uh, you know. That's my two cents.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen I comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Council members, any comments or discussion this evening? Well, we couldn't let anything go without at least saying Twenty-third Street is open. There's no barrels. Come on, somebody get excited. Okay, don't, I gotta say. There's a lot of you that were moaning and groaning when it was closed up with a lot of barrels. How about getting excited that they're gone? Come on. It looks good. It looks great. Uh, obviously, they're not a hundred percent done. We've talked about that for multiple times, but, you know, uh, they'll be working on lights, they'll be working on striping, yeah, miscellaneous things for another, you know, probably another month or so. And, uh, but it does, it does look good. I mean, I'm waiting for the airplane to land as you're going down, but, but it really does look nice. So it's good to have that, that basically behind us. Uh, other than that, I, I have nothing to add this evening. We'll move on to, uh, resolutions.
Item fourteen A resolution number R two five dash one two seven, setting the property tax request at seven million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-three cents.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the resolution to number R, resolution number R two five dash one two seven be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two five dash one two seven. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. I would make one statement before we move on regarding that and then ordinances in fifteen A and fifteen B. Common statement is that this is gonna be in front of the public for the fourth or fifth time, uh, and this will be the final approval of what we're presenting. So, uh, you know, I, I just want to point out that this is not something that's just been put out there tonight. This is something that's been available for discussion and comments for quite some time. All right, we have a motion and a second. Oh, we did, okay, I'm sorry. Um, move, sorry, go ahead.
Item fourteen B resolution number R two five dash one two eight, approving the commercial lease agreement with the Columbus Area Children's Museum Incorporated for space in the Columbus Community Building for operation of a children's museum.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R two five dash one two eight be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two five dash one two eight. Any discussion? Do you want to explain? I know it was a two-year lease maybe and then it moved up to, or, and we, go ahead and explain first.
Questions on the, on the lease.
Okay, I was gonna ask for a better explanation first, maybe, or do you want to, whatever you want to do?
Brett Kump, thirty-nine thirty, Forty-Eighth Avenue. Um, I, I see on the lease, you know, they have a max amount of about thirty-nine hundred or so. My question would be, what has the average been? You know that they've been paying here for however long they've been there?
I'm gonna defer to Gene. Gene runs all of this children's museum lease agreement.
Actually, we do have somebody from the children's museum board here.
That went around quick. I want to see who she's gonna pass it to when she.
Kelly Cedar, forty-six oh four Thirty-first Street here in Columbus. On average, so the city gave us a year of free rent when we moved in because we had to wait for the city building to be completed before we could do our build out. So then we had a free rent that was included. Um, on average, you're looking at twelve thousand dollars quarterly, roughly, between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars quarterly.
So if it's been close to four thousand a month, which is what is written in the lease, that would be right about what you're saying at this point in time? And then that original lease, what I was asking was two years, was it? Or because of the build out, it went for two years and you have asked for five?
That is correct.
Is that, okay. Any, Brett, you have any?
My question, uh, I know they want a five-year lease now, so I, I see in the lease, there's nothing built in there, you know, for any increases. So my question would be, on average, do we think they're going to be maintaining that or would there, you know, with the memberships and that, start to lessen and lessen within that five-year period, which would mean maybe we're not gonna get quite the rent that we were now? You know, we're locking ourselves in for five years with no increases, you know, in there. So my question would be, you know, do we think those amounts are gonna stay the same or increase a little bit or have they been lowering at all, you know, at this point?
I guess I'm not following what amount, because we're, we're stipulating a, a rental amount of thirty-nine hundred and somewhat up to.
It's based on.
That's the max.
Right, okay.
Right, I'm saying if it's not the max and we're not reaching that max and it keeps getting lower and lower, there's that five-year period you're getting locked into here, you know, where it was year to year before.
Yeah, let's explain the rationale a little bit. We, when we started the children's museum initiative and started working with the board and everything, we, um, the city council at that time wanted to participate in a children's museum but didn't want to operate it. This space lease is not a, it's a commercial lease, but it's certainly not a commercial rate for the space that they have because it is a, there's a lot of cities that provide spaces at no cost, um, or run the children's museum theirself. So I think as a quality of life amenity, it's still a, a huge asset to Columbus and the community building's still generating some revenue.
That's how I think we probably should look at it, you know? It's not really necessarily, say, a moneymaker or anything. It's more for the quality of life.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
I'm up here. I just want to provide some updates to you guys on the children's museum. Since we opened in February of twenty twenty-four, we've welcomed over fifty-three thousand people to our museum. We have over twenty-five hundred memberships. We've welcomed over two thousand children for field trips and we've hosted numerous events from New Year's Eve to the Q to crawl. And I just wanted to take the time to thank you for your support and your ongoing support of the children's museum. We are the only children's museum in northeast Nebraska and it was your guys' help that brought it here and we are committed to sustaining that. And our fundraising efforts have not stopped. We are constantly securing grants. We are fundraising daily and that is something that I am very passionate about because currently my children are enjoying it, but I want my children's children and generations to come for the children's museum to continue to be a staple in our community of the community building and I want to continue that legacy. We are surviving, we are, um, doing very, very well with our memberships. I know you had brought it up. I, I don't foresee our membership numbers going down, I only see it growing. Every new person that's looking to move here, their first stop is the children's museum and they can't believe how amazing it is and that someplace, that's what they say, someplace like Columbus, Nebraska has a children's museum. So it is very, something that we are all very passionate about on the board and we are very proud to be in Columbus. Thank you.
Well, I know you mentioned you're constantly fundraising, but we might as well give you a little plug next weekend, you are part of the Taste of Columbus. And so you will be sharing in those revenues generated by the Taste of Columbus.
Yes.
So congratulations on that and good luck for next weekend.
Thank you.
And thank you to you and your board for your time and dedication.
Yep, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen C resolution number R two five dash one two nine, creating a micro TIF, um, financing program, or I should say micro tax increment financing with short-term micro TIF program for the sh, city of Columbus.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R two five dash one two nine.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R two five dash one two nine. Any discussion?
Maybe just some clarification on what type of things we can use this money for.
Sure, it's not money in hand. That's the first.
Sorry.
Clarif, no, it's okay. That's the first, um, important thing for people to understand. I, it is a new process that the state of Nebraska, um, legislated we could do a couple of years ago. Um, we've been exploring it and kind of watching to see who else has used it and there's certainly benefits to it, especially, um, for smaller projects, smaller TIF projects, so things that are updating to meet minimum code. So let's say it's a downtown building that needs electrical and plumbing and maybe they want to add a second floor living space or they need another point of egress. So it's certainly not a project that the improvement's going to generate a significant increase in their assessed value, but it will generate an increase. Um, so these micro TIF projects, there's basically, as you re, read in the resolution, there's an administrative approval process. We'll do, I believe we left in ten a year, um, to start out with to see how it goes. But basically, traditional TIF is very intensive, lots of hurdles, lots of hoops to jump through. So this is basically an abbreviated, less expensive for the property owner process to go through, but still, um, an incentive for property owners to be able to do those smaller projects. These projects all have to still take place in blight and substandard areas. So we have our blight and substandard map of the city with our presently fourteen different areas around the city. So these projects also have to take place in those areas. Um, but, does that answer your question?
Yeah, just asking for a friend, would, would, would a roof be replaced? Could you, do, would that fall into that category, roof? Okay. My friend will be so happy.
I do, um.
You're passing a buck again.
I am on the downtown business improvement district agenda for November to do some education on micro TIF and I am going to do the Chambers Luncheon Learn in February on TIF and micro TIF to just do some public education on these programs. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding in the community about them, so if there's any other place you think would be beneficial to have some education, let me know.
Well, and I had mentioned or asked the question during the equalization part of our earlier meeting about micro TIF in downtown areas specifically is what I was thinking because I had, uh, I've heard of some communities that are using it in downtown areas and have been very successful and, and attribute the ability of micro TIF to being a big shot in their arm because of what it's been able to do for those individual businesses. So, I mean, I just think it's a great, another tool, another tool in the tool belt that we can utilize and see where we can go. All right, uh, any other questions?
Is this for a fifteen-year term, like regular TIF?
Mm-hmm, up, maximum of fifteen. And it's still, TIF is always if not but for, meaning the, that's the state statute language. A project cannot get TIF unless it would not happen without TIF.
Right, right.
So anybody that, um, alludes to the fact that you, like, there's projects in town that would be here without TIF, they would still be the same projects, that is false. That is a state law that a project that gets tax increment financing could not have happened without the tax increment financing and that's the same for micro TIF.
Okay, thank you.
Micro TIF, has that always been around?
Not utilized in the past?
No, it's a couple of sessions ago that the legislature started allowing it.
I see, thank you.
We had a, we had a presentation to the council about it just to educate us, uh, back in August, back in August. So, so the first we really heard as a group about it was then. And so, you know, just the process of getting educated, feeling comfortable and then deciding.
Be interesting to see how it works out.
Exactly, exactly.
Will it, will it affect the percentage? You know, we can only TIF so much.
Of a community, yeah.
Right now, will micro TIF be a part of that number?
It's, the law isn't that you can, um, actually do tax increment financing, it's the percentage of land that is designated blight and substandard. So the, the designated blight and substandard limit, so if you think about acres in the city, no more than thirty-five percent of the acres in the city can be designated blight and substandard.
So whatever's within that area is unlimited?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions? Very entertaining there. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fourteen D resolution R two five dash one three zero, approving the reimbursement agreement for preliminary engineering services with Union Pacific Railroad Company for a quiet zone study.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R twenty-five dash one hundred and thirty be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R two five dash one three O. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
We previously discussed this and, and I still believe that this will not fix our problem downtown. Um, a, a quiet zone is just not what's gonna cure switching and it's not gonna help people's attitude and I, I think we're just wasting our time studying it. Um, it, it just doesn't, uh, and, and the Viadoc would have probably been the, the case, but we couldn't get that done. I, I just don't think a quiet zone, uh, for the money we have to spend on it, uh, will answer the problems that we have.
All right.
And I will vote against this, so everybody knows that in advance.
I actually, I, I understand what you're saying and where you're coming from. I actually brought this up a year and a half ago after. brought this up a year and a half ago after the decision was made that the viaduct seemed to be dead and we could move no further with it. Uh, I don't disagree that you're, you're, you may not be solving some of your crossing issues, but if we can make the downtown area a better environment without the horns and the whistles and, you know, that's the, the purpose of it is to give it a better environment, not the best, but a better environment. Um, and that's what I, I mean, that's what I, I am looking at this for.
I, I guess I would look more for safety and, and moving traffic as opposed to.
Well, I.
What it does for acoustics. I don't know.
Well, to me, the safety is the viaduct. And, well, the public said they don't want it, so is there another alternative?
I'm just saying, it's, I think we're over two, in my opinion.
Alright, any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Ordinance is on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two five dash one five, adopting the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six pay plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number two five dash one five be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two five, uh, read ordinance number two five dash one five by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two five dash one five.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number two five dash one five be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two five dash one five. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fifteen B, ordinance number two five dash one six, adopting the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget.
Mr. Mayor, move the rules be suspended and ordinance number two five dash one six be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a tie for second to read ordinance number two five dash one six by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two five dash one six.
I move that ordinance number two five dash one six be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two five dash one six. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fifteen C, ordinance number two five dash one seven, amending section one hundred and thirty-three point oh two of chapter one hundred and thirty-three of title thirteen of the Columbus City Code regarding concealed weapons to conform with state law.
Mr. Mayor, move the rules be suspended and ordinance number two five dash one seven be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, read ordinance number two five dash one seven by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two five dash one seven.
Move for the adoption of ordinance number two five dash one seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two five dash one seven. Any discussion? So this is just bringing our city code up to compliance with state statute, correct? Alright, we're not changing anything on our end. We're just complying with what the state says. I mean, we are changing, but we're not on.
And it is different than it was before. We used to prohibit concealed weapons and the state is basically overriding that and saying that concealed has to be allowed.
Alright, any other comments or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. You can all bring your concealed weapon next time.
Goodness.
Alright, ordinance is on their third reading.
Item seventeen A, ordinance number two five dash one six, amending section one hundred and thirty-three point nine nine of chapter one hundred and thirty-three of title thirteen of the Columbus City Code regarding the penalty for discharge of fireworks in violation of city code.
I believe it's ordinance two five dash one four. You said one six.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was, I don't know.
Okay, we have a mo- we need a motion and ordinance number two five dash one four.
Move ordinance number two five dash one four be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two five dash one four. Any discussion?
Just thank everybody for trying to put a little more teeth into this, um, code so we can see if we can make it less acoustics during the Fourth of July time.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.